Diamond Lake School District 76, roll call please. Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items this evening. If you have a public comment, either please feel free to come forward to speak, or if you are joining us virtually, type that into the chat box and we can read it into the meeting for you. And we will pause for a moment to give anyone who wishes to make a public comment the opportunity to do so. Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to presentations.
All right, tonight's presentations are recognizing West Oak Middle School staff and students. And our first presentation is a recognition of a diamond award. So I'd like to call up Mr. Adam Dorr and Ms. Brenda Mancilla to the podium to recognize one of their colleagues for a diamond award. Would you like to both step up?
Hi, thank you all for coming tonight. The person that we are nominating is Julie Marques, the school nurse, who I'm sure you're all familiar with. What I wrote for the nomination is that Julie is a consummate professional who always gives 100% for our students and staff. She's always quick with a smile and positive attitude, and will do anything to enrich the lives of our students in all three buildings. She has been a role model dealing with our current pandemic and delivering services to all the students in person with a positive attitude and contagious smile. There is nothing she wouldn't do for students and staff, and her attitude is the same day in and day out. Whether she's covering the phones at the front desk or caring for our students, she is a positive role model for everyone in this building.
Hi, my name is Belinda Mancilla, and I have the pleasure of working with Julie Marques, our school nurse. Julie works so hard for both middle school and intermediate school. She is always there for the students when they need her. She helps Diamond Lake even when they didn't have a nurse, and she never said no. She puts in hard work in keeping our district safe, and that is why I feel like she deserves a diamond award. I'm also gonna read my partner Angie Zamora's speech. Julie goes above and beyond for her students and staff. She is always willing to be ready to help. She doesn't, she doesn't just succeed for being our school nurse, but she also helps the front desk when the students, by taking the students to class or potty breaks and lunch, to escort to lunch as well. She also sits in front desk when the admins are in meetings, and this is why Julie Marques deserves the diamond award.
Okay. Thank you so much, Belinda, Adam, and Angie, thank you so much. This award, it means so much to me, but it really, I don't deserve it because we are a great team. We work together and we put our students first and foremost. The board, you guys are amazing, Bavna, the admin, you guys have been amazing during this pandemic. We never put anxiety on the kids, they never were fearful, and we always put them first. We stayed open, we did everything to stay open. And the kids came to school and, you know, they didn't miss a beat. So thank you, we have a great team here. I brag about Diamond Lake. My son Henry went here and he always has West Oak pride. So thank you so much, we have a great team, and I appreciate it.
Julie, just on behalf of the board, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thanks for everything.
Oh, thank you.
All right, our next presentation tonight is going to be recognizing student work at West Oak Middle School. And this is something that we've made as a goal and priority, as the board knows and the community knows, to recognize student learning, give them voice and shared ownership. So our first presentation of three is going to be from West Oak Middle School, so I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you very much. Thank you for applauding, even though I've done nothing yet. So thank you so much, appreciate that. So again, congrats to Julie who's out getting her photo taken, which she probably doesn't want to do at all, but we appreciate that. So she is just a phenomenal human being, and we could not be prouder to have her be recognized tonight. She's incredible. And again, awesome, awesome Julie that she got that. This is kind of our first time doing this, really, where we're recognizing some, just some student work to spotlight some things and some students that are really proud of some things they've done. So I do want to recognize, if you are a staff member tonight from middle school, can you just like wave your hand really loudly and make a, you know, let's go. So, thank you staff for coming out tonight, thank you parents and students as well. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna invite our two sixth graders, we're gonna try this, invite them up as we go, so we'll see how this goes. But let's have Michaela and Ella, Michaela Salgado, Ella Campo come up first, you guys will kind of wait behind me here. Just briefly, as, as most of you know in this room, we were recently recognized as an Illinois Horizon and National Forums School to Watch. It's a big deal for us, it's really, we're one of only 31 middle schools that's ever gotten that award. It's a national designation, 400 middle schools in the country have gotten it. We had applied, it's a, it's a very big deal. And it really had to do with the type of, just really, our whole entire staff is just like Julie many, not just like Julie, no one can be like Julie. But the type of caring, just human beings that have been here the last couple of years, they've been here more than two years, but just an incredible thing, and our students were so proud of. So just wanted to take a couple of seconds just to quickly highlight things. We got this 13-page site visit report that came back to us last week, and we just grabbed a couple of highlights out of it. You'll see some themes, because these are things we've done as a district for many years. And there's four categories, they loved our master schedule, they loved how many choices our students have, they love how we've made literacy a priority. Over and over again, students, they felt like they have a place at our school, and that they belong. Parents felt like they had a voice, that students have options in their clubs and their sports. And then in terms of social equity, that students, again, feel like they have a voice and their perspective is valued. They, they were amazed, the student citizenship and behaviors, they said that we won the cellphone thing, which we have not. But they were just incredibly impressed with how respectful the students are, they really had never seen in any site visit, and positive relationships are priority. They felt that from the district and board level to the parents and students, everything is well communicated in terms of goals and priorities. There's great communication between school and home, and there's just a caring environment. So I want to highlight that, because those are things that have been board priorities for years, and that came out just in one of the three schools. You could go to intermediate and Diamond Lake and see the same thing. So just very excited about that, and we're gonna find out how this goes tonight. We have about eight very nervous but incredibly talented students that are gonna share, and so the... Okay, so the first presentation tonight is gonna be Ella Campo, and she's gonna share from her social studies class, and they're gonna do all the introduction explaining, I'm gonna do some Vanna White work, and it's gonna be awesome. So Ella, come on up.
Hi, I did a country creator project in doing social studies. We had to create landforms and bodies of water. We had to learn about human geography and combine it with physical geography and absolute location.
These were the objectives, these are fancy ones.
Students will be able to identify absolute and relative locations. Students will be able to create a map and identify a map scale, map legend, and encompass roads. Students will be able to identify physical and human characteristics of their island slash country. I designed my island near Alaska because there are new islands that are possible to discover there.
Okay, skip one, okay.
The new animal I discovered was a bat, Misses the crocodile.
That's not the new animal, I just liked that picture. So anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, it lives in the forest next to the water, it is really friendly and a herbivore, even though it looks really scary. That's actually a religion, that's a god.
You wanna tell them how the religion works?
Yeah, all they do is just like praise Phil, because he's the one who discovered the island. I designed the city near the water because I was inspired by Florida. There are a lot of adventures near the city for people that could also go and explore out the island.
All right.
I learned that there's a lot of different types of physical geography and a location, and they can intermix.
All right, thank you, Ella, excellent. Round of applause for Ella.
That's actually in Ms. Enriquez's classes back there, so thank you, Ms. Enriquez, for that. Michaela Salgado's gonna come up next, Michaela.
I was able to summarize every chapter. I did an Esperanza Rising booklet summary. I was able to summarize every chapter and what the main character did in each section. Students will identify to determine various key components of the novel. Students will analyze the main character by citing evidence to support their inferences and what the student states. Students will summarize an important event within each chapter of the novel. Students will design a cover that illustrates an important quote from the novel. I'm proud of this because I invested the time and I really summarized every section of the booklet. I chose the front, the picture of the front, on the front of the booklet because it shows the main character coming to America from Mexico. The main character had the money she saved taken from her, but she was surprised when someone was able to take her to America. Um, that means, uh, she was saving up money and her cousin took it from her, but the reason she was saving up money was so she can bring her grandma back from Mexico, and her cousin took the money from her to bring her grandma back from Mexico. I organized the chapters by finding the main problem in each chapter and explaining the main problem in greater detail. I learned how leaving your family can really hurt you and about some of the reasons why being separated from your family can happen.
Nice, thank you, Michaela.
Let's, let's have our seventh grader, you guys can have a seat, wonderful. Let's have Brendan and Sophia come on up, while they're coming up. Not too fast, slow down, I'm just kidding, come up here, let's go, let's go, let's go, Sophia, come on. As they're coming up, we do have those learning objectives in there that show that we actually have a concept that we're doing, we do it for a purpose, just so you can get a little bit of that background when they're reading that, just to highlight it. But with that being said, Mr. and Ms. Lozano here, yes, Ms. Lozano was here, that was her ELA project, Esperanza Rising, powerful book, very powerful book, very relevant to a lot of, a lot of our students can connect to different elements and themes in that book. This one comes out of Mr. Dorr and Ms. Enriquez's class. So we're gonna have two students share their perspectives on it, and Sophia will explain a little bit more right now.
So I'm gonna be explaining the project we had to do in social studies, which was called The Hats of the President. So the first step for this project was to actually know and be able to understand what the hats of the president are. The hats of the president are, simply put, the jobs a president may have. Some major jobs or hats the president has are commander in chief, which gives the president control of all the armed forces of the US, and economic chief, which leaves the country's finances and economy in the president's hands. There are seven hats in total. The second step was to decide on what president we were going to do. The students were limited to choosing from one of the 45 past US presidents. The third step was to do your research on your chosen president. The final step to this project was to gather all your research and put it into a slideshow, along with giving the president chosen a letter grade for each hat and a final overall grade at the end. Ending objective from here, do you have to read it?
No, Sophia, so Sophia saying she isn't gonna read them. The basic political systems, we had, we ran a couple trial runs and tried to get them smaller and smaller. Essentially, it's we're trying to gather, how to gather from credible sources to understand different political ideals and traditions. So there you go.
So this is my slideshow, and the, okay, so this first slide is the introduction slide, and it has the president I chose, which was John F. Kennedy, and some things about him, like when and where he was born, the things he did before becoming president, and who he won against in the 1960s presidential election. This second slide is about how well I thought John F. Kennedy did as chief executive. He did really well, so I gave him an A. In fact, I thought he strongly succeeded in being a chief executive when he issued an executive order establishing the Peace Corps. The Peace Corps is a volunteer program run by the US government that provides social and economic aid internationally. The, this slide is about the chief diplomatic hat, and the chief diplomatic hat is all about making treaties and signing foreign policies, which John F. Kennedy exceeded in doing when he signed the Nuclear Test Ban Treaty. This treaty prohibited nuclear weapon tests underwater, in the atmosphere, or in outer space. I gave him an A plus because of this. Like I mentioned in the project explanation, this tag gives the president full control of all the armed forces of the US. While John F. Kennedy didn't do so well on this, I bumped his grade down to a B simply because of what happened at the Bay of Pigs invasion. Kennedy's troops were outnumbered and eventually surrendered after 24 hours of battle. Coming straight to the chase, I gave Kennedy an A plus on this hat. Revenue Act of 1964 was a tax cut originally proposed by Kennedy in 1963, but was passed after his assassination. Statistics a couple of years after this act was passed prove that this act affected the economy positively, such as the unemployment rate going down, which meant that more people got jobs after the tax cut. This has a cheap legislation hat, and I gave Kennedy an A plus on this one. I gave him this grade because of another act that was first proposed by him in 1963, but was carried out after his assassination. This act was called the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and it to this day prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, gender, and national origin. This hat is the political party chief hat, and I gave Kennedy an A minus on this one. In his acceptance speech, Kennedy used the term "new frontier" to describe what actions he wanted to take as president. To a certain degree, the new frontier was a success, but its success was cut short by his assassination in 1963. I think the new frontier could have accomplished more if it weren't for Kennedy's passing. This is the last hat, which is the chief of state hat, and I gave him an A on this one. Even though I wasn't alive to hear his inaugural speech, these words still hold a deep meaning in my heart. Ask not what you can do for your country, ask what your, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. These were, these words challenged Americans to contribute or give back to their country in some way. This is the last slide in my slideshow, which is the overall grade. For the overall grade, I give Kennedy an A. I truly think he did really good as president, but yet again, he could have accomplished so much more if it wasn't for his passing. Um, in this project, I learned about, a lot about the life of John F. Kennedy and how he died as president.
Excellent, all right, next one up is Brendan Cardona. Ready, bud? All right, man.
Um, this is the first slide of my presidential hats project.
It's this guy.
This is, the person I picked was 26th President Theodore Roosevelt. This is my first slide here. Chief, as chief executive, Theodore Roosevelt established the Food and Drug Act, or Administration, to regulate food safety. And I gave him an A in this, in this hat, because the FDA is a big part of today's economy and like how we live today. Um, as chief diplomat, I gave him an A minus. I gave him this grade because he was good at, he was a good peacemaker, as well as a good negotiator, but this is not as extraordinary as it could have been. As commander in chief, Theodore Roosevelt's position, or as commander in chief is often, often, often debated over. He used the military forces 14 times throughout his presidency. I give him a B plus because I feel like he used the military too much during his presidency, and but he still tried to keep the economy stable during his time. As economic chief, I gave him an A minus because he might been, might have been a little harsh at the time, but I think it was for the greater good of the economy, the economy at the time. As chief legislator, I gave him an A plus because without some of these important things such as the Square Deal, the Antiquities Act of 1906, the Alkins Act of 1903, and the Pure Food Act, or Pure Food Act and Drug Act of 1906. As political party chief, I gave him an A, because he helped shape the future of politics. He made the president, rather than the political parties or Congress, the center of American politics. Chief, as chief, as his position as chief of state, Theodore Roosevelt might have been thinking too far ahead, and, but he created the cabinet department designed to create, regulate corporations engaged in interstate commerce. My final grade for Theodore Roosevelt is an A minus. Theodore Roosevelt was a great president, especially for the time. He was almost assassinated when speaking to the public, then again in Germany. He did this, he did things that brought us where we, to where we are today, such as the FDA, and leading us into the future. He also saved many parks that probably wouldn't be around today without him and John Muir. I learned after completing the project, or after completing the project, I learned a lot about the great things Theodore Roosevelt did as president and his personal life as well.
All right, while they're having a seat in our eighth grade DMA crews coming up, so big props to them. They basically had to take all that information, they understood it, what they presented, so it was a lot of research, plus they had, so my eighth grade DMA, where are you? Come on up, I'm talking, there you are, my friends. So while they're coming up, they also had to basically take all the information and summarize it in order to present to you guys, to simplify what they did, so they did a great job with that. So with that, we have actually two separate groups that are gonna present their projects, they have the same, this is in DMA, Ms. Byrne is back there. Hey, Ms. Byrne. And they basically took the same videos and did totally different, or clips and totally different things with them. So they'll explain them more, I think Gio, you're first, right? So this is Givante Rogers, Riley Chavez, Sunday Daniels, and Kitzia Lorca are up here, so, all right, Gio.
Um, good evening, everybody, um, my name is Givante, and I'm gonna discuss our DMA projects that we did. We did a baking competition where we took different angles of videos and put them together into about five-minute videos. This project...
Our learning objective was to use various shots and angles to record and edit our own short film that lasted three minutes long, which we did, we never stuck to one single shot, we always changed it up, and we used different shots and angles. What are videos about? Our video was about making mudcakes as a baking competition. And our techniques were, we never really stuck to one single technique, but we mostly played around with various shots and angles that Ms. Byrne taught us, and we just stuck with whatever was best.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna end it there, so just showing a couple of different angles, a little thing, maybe making you hungry a little bit. So I'm gonna bring up, I think it's Sunday introducing this next one, right? Okay.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Sunday Daniels, as you know. What was my question? So we approached it as a different aestheticism, because the first time that we were making this video all together, it was a team, but we had different opinions about the videos and what was going on. So of course, we had to be like, all right, let's split. Me and Kitzia were gonna do a different one, and then they were gonna do the other one, which you just saw here. And obviously, I like our better, I like our better. Also, can I add, oh shoot, can I add that I edited all of it? Oh, also, can I add, um, oh, shoot, it's really, can I add that I edited all of it? So that's why I was in the video and all of it, but I edited all this. Basically, what we learned, we, we learned, um, how to communicate and collaborate skills. And just like talk more because we usually like never talk, we just argue. And, and then we had to merge creative styles and expressions and like explain like our different like styles. Because like we obviously didn't have our same style, and that's why we decided to split up because Miss Byrne was getting mad at us that we kept arguing. We. Um, we had to learn how to work through conflict to make a great product at the end, which we obviously did. Yeah.
All right. Like, that group is, that group is very shy. So, uh, but no, we obviously cut the video very short. They did a lot of different things with angles to play with that and, and they did a great job. And we had to show them. Burn try to eat that. So, um, that was excellent. So thank you, guys. I'm really proud of our students. That's just a sample of a few things and a few subjects. Um, so thank you to our students and to our families tonight for raising wonderful kids and coming out tonight. So thank you very much. And that's it for us.
So that ends our presentations for this evening. So if student, oh, do we have one more? Okay. All right. So that ends our presentations for this evening, and thank you for our families and our staff and our students who came out. And you are welcome to stay because we have a very exciting board meeting ahead of us, or you, um, thank you for coming and enjoy your evening. We won't take it personally.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. Have a good evening. Okay, um, so thank you all for those presentations. They were outstanding. Not that anyone is still here to listen to us, but. We are excited to see what the intermediate school and Diamond Lake will have to show us in the future. Um, personally, I think as a board, we really enjoy being able to see what the kids are doing in the classroom. It's always fun to have them present. They're all outstanding speakers. And it's really nice to be able to have our staff be able to highlight, you know, what's going on in their classrooms too. Um, we will move on now to the business agenda. We have one item for action. Uh, the first item on the business agenda is just the omnibus vote agenda that will be voted on at our next March board meeting. The second item is the item for action, which is, um, a personnel item. Yet resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one new hire, one leave of absence, and one resignation. May I have a motion to approve? Yes. Okay, that motion carries. And that concludes the business agenda. Moving on to board discussion for the evening, we have. Um, information regarding proposed student fees for the next school year. Mr. Rogers, now that you just took a big drink, um, is there anything you'd like to present or discuss?
Yes, thank you. Um, so. The student fees, this is a recap. We have not had any proposed updates in about three years, I think, eighteen, nineteen school year. And that was mostly, you know, a variety of factors, but you know, mostly pandemic related. We didn't want to inquire about raising fees at all. Uh, one of the new initiatives, and I believe one of the board direct, uh, board initiatives was, uh, this executive functioning program. This is the first year that we've rolled this out, more of a pilot program. And I know the principals could speak better, uh, at it than I can, but next year is going to be a, a full district rollout from grades one through eight. So there's a pretty large cost to that program and a couple of the components. Uh, we felt was best to come from the district. So there's a continuity standpoint and what's been purchased, colors, things like that. A large portion of the program. Has to do with, you know, certain colored binders for certain subjects. So we want to have some unity between all grade levels and all, all students. So the five dollar increase that I'm proposing to supply fees, um, covers a very, very small portion of that, but it will offset some of the consumables each year. Otherwise, I have, uh, all sports banned, summer school, all those activities remain the same.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you for that information. Are you going to include it on our agenda for the next meeting for action? April. April.
Yeah, I have it for the April first board meeting.
Okay, perfect. Okay, um. I think that's all we have for board discussion. We did not have any FOIA requests. Um, under notices and communications, we have. The Board of Ed calendar for twenty-one, twenty-two. We have the, um, February of twenty-twenty-two Diamond Edge newsletter that went out. And then we have the seat all executive board agendas for March third. Um. John is going to attend their regular meeting, which I believe is tomorrow on the board's behalf. So. He will be there and we'll report back after that meeting. Um, okay, that brings us to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. We have any public comments, um, please feel free to add those to the chat box and we can read them into the meeting. We will give you a moment to do so. Okay, it does not look like there's any public comments. Um, moving on to others. Does anyone have any others this evening? Okay, this is fast. Okay, then we will, um. Make a motion to adjourn to executive session. For the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district. To determine its validity. For the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. The setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the district. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, please? Yes. Okay.